All right. Well, good evening. Residents of Tulare, guests, staff and fellow council members. We are here for our, if I could talk, September sixteenth Tulare City Council Special Meeting. And we'll call this to order. This is a study session. And to let the public know, comments at a special meeting, study session are limited to items listed on the special meeting agenda. If you would like to speak during this, during this special session, each speaker, which will be recognized by the mayor would be allowed three minutes per item. For those that are wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine. So we are two point one Adventure Park Operations and Elk Bayou Nature Preserve Master Plan, RFP. With special presentation. With that, I will turn this over. Mark, you want to kick this off?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Council, good afternoon, folks, welcome staff. Very excited to be here. As we've shared before, we've got about six remaining council meetings through the balance of this year. And at each one, we're going to have likely have special presentations and work sessions on a lot of different exciting topics. I just want to put them in a big context for you. You know, we are continuing to strive to find new opportunities and new ideas that we can bring to the community that will help not only enrich the community, but help encourage additional private sector investment, making our community unique, especially as we compare ourselves to some of the surrounding jurisdictions. And that can be difficult at times because, you know, in some ways I would argue we're a little behind some of the jurisdictions. I mean, obviously Visalia is twice our size. They have a lot more economic development uses in their community. And sometimes some of those uses land. And once they arrive in a community, you don't have the opportunity to attract them to your community. And so that's why we're regularly striving to find unique opportunities. Tonight, we're going to talk about one that I've had an opportunity to work on in the past. We have a guest that will be presenting information to you. I'm going to introduce him in a minute. You'll recall when I was doing my interview with you four years ago for this position, I talked about some of the projects I had worked on in the past. And one of them was an adventure park. We built one in Rockland, California. You are starting to see city, more cities and counties throughout the nation and other types of organizations build adventure parks and adventure elements as a means not only to provide recreation for its citizens, but also as a means to attract people to their community and spend dollars in their community. And so we introduced that concept to you during the interview process. We've talked about it a couple of times over the past couple of years. We most recently talked about it when we were discussing the Elk Bayou Nature Preserve Project. So this evening, we're going to have a presentation for you to talk about what is sort of the nature in a venture park? What are kind of the elements that you might see in one? We're not asking you to make any decisions or vote on anything this evening. It's really just informational and a chance for you to ask questions. Once we're done with that presentation, we're going to turn it over to Chris Orr, who's going to just at a high level, walk you through our draft Elk Bayou Nature Preserve RFP that we're intending to issue this week to try to seek proposals from firms to help us develop a master plan of that one mile section or so on the southern part of town. And how do we create a very unique habitat area with habitat restoration and trail systems? Maybe foot bridges and other recreational uses and maybe a reimagination of the Elk Bayou Park area. We talked about a little bit of that last time. And when we talked about that, we said, you know, we might want to look at incorporating some adventure elements into the Elk Bayou. I had the opportunity to speak with Dylan Burt. He is the, one of the owner operators of Adventure Operations. He is the individual who operates the Corey Park Adventures project in Rockland. Dylan and I worked hard together on that project since that time, some seven years ago. That was his first adventure park under this corporation. I think now they're operating half a dozen or more adventure parks around the country. So he's going to show you some of those projects. I had a chance to talk with him about the nature preserve and about our entertainment district project. That's another project we're working on that will come back to you for a presentation. We're currently scheduling that for October twenty first. And in that project, you'll remember we've talked about the possibility of creating an indoor recreation facility. That was one of the priority projects out of the park master plan. I shared with you before that we did one in the Rockland area where we funded it largely, actually exclusively through T O T tax revenue and drove tournaments to the area. I talked with Dylan about the possibility of building an indoor adventure, sort of an indoor outdoor venture park, maybe tied in with the entertainment district and the indoor rec facility. And, and he's very familiar with that type of modeling. He'll show you some examples of that today. And actually, I think he and I both agree that maybe we do the RFP for the Elk Bayou. We see what kind of ideas come out of, out of the consulting firms. And maybe, maybe we sort of pause on the idea of an adventure park at, at Elk Bayou, but we reserve space for one in the future. And then when we, after we present the entertainment district to you and we issue that RFP, we focus more on doing that larger indoor outdoor facility as part of the rec center or rec facility and the entertainment district. And if that's successful, come back in the future and maybe look at Elk Bayou. Anyways, that's a lot of information. Again, no voting today, just information. So with that, let me introduce you Dylan Burt. He's on, you can see him on the screen right there. Handsome fellow, wave, wave your hand, Dylan. Say hi to everybody there, Dylan. Dylan, why don't you share a little bit with us about who you are, who Adventure Operations is and the kind of projects you're working on?
Yeah. So thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. So my company is actually, it's called Applied Adventure Consulting. Adventure Operations is the LLC that we operate Corey Park Adventures in. And I, I am owner and CEO of this company. We started with Rockland and have expanded quite rapidly over the last several years. Adventure parks, aerial adventure parks in general have become very popular across the states. And our management model has also become very popular. We have about eight aerial adventure courses across the states. And we have three in California currently. One in Rockland, like I mentioned, one at the La Jolla Indian Reservation in Sacramento, or excuse me, in San Diego. And we also have one that is in Corona, California, just right outside of LA. So yeah, the intent here is to kind of share a little bit about those. Do we have the presentation available, Mark? Or is that?
Yep, we're putting it up right now.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
And if you just want to proctor it, we'll advance it for you.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Yeah. So like the intent of the presentation here is to help familiarize you all with what an aerial adventure park is and Applied Adventure just in general and what we do. So let's move to slide two, please. I use the term aerial adventure park as a broad descriptor to encompass everything that's in our industry. There's several different types of rides that are built in this industry. And many types of aerial adventure parks out there are built in trees, many types of aerial adventure parks out there are built on wooden structures outdoors. Many types of them are built inside. And we have, you know, there, there are zipline tours with thousands of feet of zip lines. We have zipline canopy tours, which are a platform to platform kind of an experience where you zipline between trees. We have challenge courses that are indoors, like you see on the right of the, of the, the slide here. And I, I'm sure many people in the audience tonight have been on aerial adventure parks of one kind or another. Let's move to slide three. Each of these aerial venture parks that I've described are a particular business model. You know, there's many different types of them, and each of them requires somebody that understands what they're doing to both keep people safe and make sure that we're employing the right people to facilitate these activities. At Applied Adventure, we consult with our clients to ensure that the business model that you choose is both appropriate for the market and cost effective. We insist in the, or we assist in the planning phase to help understand what options are available to you. And we help you choose a vendor that's appropriate for you. Then we assist in the design process and act as a client representative in the construction phase to ensure that the infrastructure that you get is right sized for you and that it works for the future of the operation. After that, we operate the adventure park for you. Let's move to slide four. There's lots of reasons that I think it would be a good idea to build a adventure park in Tulare. One, Tulare's median age is about thirty years old, twenty nine and a half. A large portion of your population is childrens, teens and young adults. Many households have children and there's a demand for family friendly engaging recreation. The median household income there is around seventy thousand dollars in twenty twenty three. And so with that disposable income, you're going to find that families are going to frequent this location. Tulare has multiple parks, playgrounds, splash pads, sports fields, et cetera. But you have U high adrenaline aerial courses or low adrenaline aerial courses slash zip lines. And I think it would be a really cool thing to put in the area. Tulare County is near Sequoia and Kings Canyon National Park, which attract millions of tourists every year. You know, in our research in the market, I think we can draw folks from that, that area and pull them off highway ninety nine to come into Tulare. Slide five, please. The adventure park business, visitors will also spend there locally. It's not just ticket sales that we're thinking of here. And in my next slides, I'll talk a little bit about Corey Park Adventures and what they've seen. But we're also seeing food, gas, hotels, nearby shopping increase because of the amount of visitors that we're bringing into these types of parks. The adventure park would also create approximately thirty five jobs there locally, including operations managers, guest services, managers and staff, course monitors, guides, safety staff, maintenance and marketing staff. Our minimum age is sixteen and we employ lots of sixteen year olds and also up. There's also opportunities to train staff in safety, tourism management, customer service, potentially building a longer term career path in the recreation hospitality industry. The parks will also need food vendors nearby. You know, folks that are willing to supply uniforms to us, signage, cleaning services. And so we create a support economy around the operation there. Visitors from nearby cities or travelers on highway ninety nine will stay longer in Tulare benefiting from, benefiting the hotels and restaurants. It could also stimulate new business investments in lodging and food service near the park. Big special pricing and partnerships for school, field trips, community groups and youth organizations could foster inclusion and help ensure that the residents benefit from the facility. Let's move on to slide six, please. Wanted to use Corey Park as sort of a case study, and we've used this in, as a case study in multiple areas. Rockland is, is an interesting community that, that project was started in, I think it started in seventeen, maybe even sixteen and developed and turned on in, in two thousand eighteen. We've been able to take that park from one point three million dollars to two point eight million dollars. And now we serve approximately fifty thousand visitors annually. Rockland invested about thirteen million in that park. And to, to, to get it to the scale it is, which is about five and a half acres, there are nine rides in that facility. And the park was designed to be a year round park as well, which I think, you know, when we, we think about outdoor versus indoor, I mean, both can operate year round in California. Corey Park is certainly outdoor activity. We do slow down in both June, June through August, we slowed down because it is so hot outside. So I think, you know, using some kind of a, when we talk about the, the development that's coming there, having an indoor type of attraction is attractive to us in that we could get more people there year round without having to worry about weather, without having to worry about, you know, environmental impact, whatever it is. The aerial adventure park has become a foundation for private development around Corey Park, including dining, events, entertainment and recreation. Let's move on to slide seven, please. The presence of the park has made the surrounding area more attractive for other businesses as well. I've mentioned this several times, both restaurateurs and retail have located themselves nearby to be able to sell to those guests. Rockland used the development of Corey Park to also build out amphitheaters. As I understand that you all have done as well, walking trails, landscaping, passive recreation areas. And those enhancements contribute to not just the economics of the park or the economics of the area, but also to the, you know, quality of life for the local residents. Corey Park is, is not only a destination for the Rockland residents, but it's also drawing folks from, you know, as far away as San Jose and everything in between there and Sacramento and beyond. The parks helped put Rockland on the map as a recreation and outdoor destination. And that, that kind of branding has a spillover effect into tourism. people relocating into the area, business interest in the area, et cetera. Move to slide eight, please. Yeah, the benefits for the local residents, I mean, it's fun. You know, it's a fun, fun activity to do. It's fun to do with the family. It's affordable recreation. It's close to home. Families won't need to travel too far for a high-quality outdoor fun, fitness and adrenaline-based play. We offer structured programs for students, scouts, sports teams, youth groups. And we, you know, our sort of ethos is that we want to keep people active and involved in this type of thing year-round. You know, we hire full-time, part-time, and seasonal employment for both teens, college students, and adults in Tulare. It's great for a first-time job, and it's a very flexible work environment. We host field trips, resident discount days, and school partnerships to ensure that the park is accessible to Tulare families. We create a signature attraction for Tulare residents that they can be proud of and something unique to call their own. Let's move to slide nine, please. So yeah, AAC, Applied Adventure Consulting. We have experience across the states. We currently operate in California, Missouri, Illinois, West Virginia, North Carolina, and Vermont. And like I said, we have multiple attractions in the state of California. Each site has evolved into a regional destination with a high guest satisfaction and strong community support. We offer turnkey operations, so we fully manage, we manage everything about the business. We essentially take over the business and run the business for you. We offer revenue-sharing models, so our model is typically a management model where we we take a minimum fee or or a percentage of gross, whichever is higher. We do local discount days, like we've mentioned, like I mentioned before, school field trip programs, resident-focused pricing, and we commit to ongoing maintenance upgrades and innovations. Like we're, we view this as a partnership with you, so we want to make sure that what you have is continuing to mature and advance as we continue the relationship with you. Move to slide ten. Applied Adventure currently partners with two municipalities where we we operate for the city of Rockland, California, and also Marshall County, West Virginia. We we offer flexible agreements, like I just mentioned, full-service development from the the very beginning of a project to operating time. We do everything in between, and what that means is that we handle site planning, equipment sourcing, course design, permitting support, initial construction. And clients don't need to have the in-house expertise to be able to do something like this because we bring all of that to the table. We prioritize hiring local residents, and where we can't, we have a very large network of people that are in our network that we can pull from to ensure that we have quality management staff. And our national marketing team executes campaigns that target both local families and regional tourists. We have ongoing facility and safety management. We do daily seasonal long-term maintenance, and that's all handled by Applied Adventure. Parks remain safe, clean, and up-to-date with very little or no burden to the city. We also offer a offer, excuse me, regular reporting on park usage, finances, visitor demographics, and community feedback. This keeps the city leadership informed and builds trust with our partners. And move to slide eleven, please. Lastly, why should, why should Tulare consider doing something like this? As it's not the last slide, but soon to be. The Arrow Park stimulates ongoing local spending. We can provide a direct income to the city through our revenue share program. The Arrow Park supports new business development such as cafes, gear shops, lodging. These are all, you know, direct examples of things that we've seen built by our parks to be able to capitalize on the guests that we have coming there. Gives Tulare a signature attraction that puts it on the map, moves Tulare from a drive-through to a destination from the Central Valley and Highway ninety-nine travelers. Positions the city as a recreation for community, enhances Tulare's livability and health by offering accessible recreation for all ages, supports the city's priority around youth development, public health, and family engagement, seasonal full-time jobs, like I've mentioned. And with an experienced partner, the city avoids operational risks. Tulare enjoys the long-term benefits of the of the park with very little work to do there. Next step, slide, slide twelve, please. So our next step is to come to site and do a feasibility study with you, really spend time with you, understanding, you know, from from both, you know, our perspective, city staff perspective, the stakeholders' perspective, you know, council members' perspective, what is it that you're trying to do? We define those goals, and then we do a market analysis on the site. What we don't want to do is we don't want to come in and put something somewhere where, you know, it's it's not going to be successful. Right? We we want to make sure that what we, the the projects that we engage in are going to be successful. So in our feasibility study, we do the market analysis. We offer a five-year performa, projecting attendance, revenue, expenses, staffing, and then what is your return on that investment over time? We also do a concept design with you where we essentially, you know, come up with an idea for and explore, you know, in graphics, what it would look like for something like this, to be able to describe that to your stakeholders. We also give you recommendations and timeline for design and construction, and then also help you pick a firm to use. There are many firms in this industry that design and build these things, and we want to make sure that we're working with the right one, both for future reasons and to make sure that the product that you get is what you want. And then the deliverable that comes out of that is a feasibility report. From there, we establish a timeline and help you to choose that design and construction firm. We work in the design process to make sure that what is getting designed is what you, what what the market can support and what you want. And then we're off to the races. Slide thirteen, please. I just want to say I am, I'm very thankful to be here. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, council members, for having me. I I think, you know, something like this can really transform a community. And it's fun to be able to do. It's fun to be able to do this for for my living and to bring this to you all. AC is poised to be a good partner to Tulare and to build something with you and not just for you. And I will follow up with the city staff and the RFP process to offer whatever support that we can, whatever feedback that we can as well. And lastly, thank you. I'd like to open the floor for any questions or feedback, if that's appropriate at this time.
Thank you for the presentation being a study session. We do have some members of the audience, and anybody in council chambers wish to speak on this item? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? But I don't want to put them on the spot to make them feel uncomfortable, anything, so I opened it to the public. Councilmember Maderos was calling you out and saying if you wanted to come up and say something.
Hello? Oh, okay. I'm Nathaniel Holmes. I like the idea. I've always loved kind of the outdoors stuff and especially looking at trampoline parks over in Hanford in the mall. I think this is a great alternative, especially for getting a lot of outdoors time, which I know a lot of people don't get nowadays nowadays, so I like the idea.
Great.
Counsel, do you have any questions of either Dylan or myself?
Yeah, yes, I wanted to find out. I saw that you had, I think, six to eight parks already in place, right? That one slide that showed the different parks. What's the average acreage for for those parks? I know one you said Rockland, I think, was five and a half acres. What's sort of the average acreage that you see?
Yes. It's a good question, and it really just depends on the business model. We have zipline canopy tours that operate on property that's two hundred plus acres. We also have very small facilities that operate in about an acre and a half. So it it depends on what you, what the business model that you put in is.
And of those that that you guys are operating, are they all outdoors or some of them indoors as well? I saw one, one of your slides had an indoor type of apparatus. Are they?
Yeah, we have operated indoor, we operate indoor activities as well.
Thank you.
All I can say is it's a very interesting concept. I think I agree with what you said and what Mark said. This would be an outstanding project for Tulare. But where we're situated and with the plans with the International Agro Center and everything around it, we could be a real destination for people to come to and partake of something like this.
I'm curious, you indicated the Rockland facility was built in two thousand seventeen for thirteen million. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In today's dollars, with construction costs going where they have, a similar project to what Rockland has, what what's your best estimate that would cost today on a five-and-a-half-acre project?
Well, before Dylan answers that, let me answer it a little bit first because Dylan came in a little bit later. So in order to do that project, remember that project's in a quarry. So we had to demolish some structures. Part of that thirteen million includes the demolition of some structures. There were old structures. We had to go inside the quarry walls and secure all the granite walls so that they wouldn't, because it, when they were mining, it used to be a mine. That was the history of Rockland was mining. So it was an old mine that just, they they abandoned it. So it was never designed to have people climbing on the walls and ziplining into it. So we had to go in there and secure all the walls and the structures before we even did the project. And so if I remember correctly, Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, if you remember, but I think the actual adventure elements themselves, I want to say that was around four million dollars for those elements. Does that sound right to you?
That's right. You're right, Mark. Yeah, so, I mean, there then there are nine different rides there, right? So there's a lot of different types of rides, and each of those has its own budget associated with that, right? So if you were to build an aerial adventure park that's indoors, it would cost far less than thirteen million. The the last adventure park that I was associated with has a capacity of about three hundred sixty people a day, which I would say is is a very high capacity. And that was one point two million dollars, and that was three months ago.
So in the area that we're looking at, do you anticipate some of the similar-type costs you had to do in the quarry?
No, no, I I think if if we ultimately, you know, and counsel doesn't have to make this decision for a while. But if we decided to, it would be a phased decision. So you might say, yes, move forward with the next feasibility study. And then if that checked out, right, then we say, okay, now move forward with the next component, which would be the design. And then, you know, so you'd have checkpoints along the way. But our current thinking is, is if you decide you want to move something like this forward, you know, when we, when we do the Out Bayou RFP, and we issue it this week, and we get that back in a couple of months, we'll bring that to you. And if there's adventure elements that are part of that design that you're interested in, then you would say, go forward with that, and we'd start designing them and cost estimating them, right? But I really think the more, the bigger focus for us for this concept should be with the entertainment district as part of that indoor rec facility. Now, I don't know what that indoor rec facility is going to be yet. I I think you remember we built one, an indoor facility in Roseville, Rockland area. That was a very large facility. I think that was a thirty-million-dollar project just for the indoor sports complex itself, twelve basketball courts. I don't remember how many volleyball courts, you know, hardwood floors. We don't necessarily have to do that. This would be, this could be an added component, right? So you could have, what Dylan and I talked about was, maybe you do it, you do an indoor rec facility, but you do one that's taller. So the entire ceiling space is is all of adventure elements. And then there's another component, so so you wouldn't attribute all the cost of the building of that building to the adventure park, just whatever that extended height is, right? So I think we have to go further to figure out what makes sense for Tulare. We got to do the feasibility study and see what the market would support. You know, the goal is to have an element, an adventure park that will attract people to it and eventually generate revenue for the city. And the parks, like, for example, in Rockland, Dylan's team is paying the city of Rockland a fee every year to cover, you know, his usage of that, you know, rental of that facility, so to speak. So we have to really get into weeds to figure that out, and then council would have the opportunity to decide. We'd probably present you several options. We could do something a little smaller, something a little bigger, and you would tell us what level of comfort you had. And we would share with you all the financing options, et cetera.
And and normally, is it, what would you target an indoor facility, say, like a Kmart that that shut down or something of that nature in a shopping center?
You could do that. I think where we would be concerned about doing something like that would be just making sure, you know, he he, Dylan, I have to tell you more, but the immediate thought I have is that you have enough height.
Yeah, height, and then then the engineering requirements of supporting the weight that is, you know, put on those elements and building that infrastructure up at height. So yet, yes, it's entirely possible. I have actually seen that done where it was built in an old JCPenney, actually. But that that requires sort of reverse engineering, making sure that the building is up to code, making sure that, you know, what you are attaching to is strong enough to be able to pull the load that you're you're putting on it, so on and so forth.
So I just have one question. This proposal is for the nature preserve at the Elk Bayou. And so I'm assuming we're looking at outdoor, maybe an outdoor facility. And you said at quarry, there's nine rides included. So I was just wondering, in this site with this acreage, if there was a zipline would be the main attraction, which I love doing ziplines, so I'm all for that. What would the other attractions might be that would be for people that perhaps a zipline is a little bit too adventurous? Are there other things that you have in Rockland that might enhance the use of the property? Because it met the needs of multiple people, not just adventurous people that jump out of airplanes and do zip lines.
Sure, yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, there are, there are many, many different options, including challenge courses. We have a, in in Rockland, we have a netted kids course, which is for families of young children so that we increase the demographic that we have coming out to the, to the facility. Maybe dad and and his son or daughter can go on that facility, and mom is out going ziplining or vice versa, right? And so, yes, there there are multiple options that we could put on that, on that facility as well. We also do smaller kids' challenge courses where the the height of the challenge course is about six feet off of the ground. So mom and dad can walk along with their children while they're on that facility. But yeah, I mean, there there's a vast array of different kinds of rides, including a trampoline is is one of those items that that we operate.
Yeah, thank you, because I think that would just um attract even more uh of our citizens uh to to the facility, because there's not a lot for kids to do in our community at all, and that would be another big plus.
I completely agree with you.
Uh, another question along those lines, Mr. Mayor, uh are there any parks that you are directly involved or know of that also include like water rides that are a combination of that? In terms of like, I know like in Fresno, they got the big water rides. They have one in Clovis. I don't think we have anything closer than Fresno in terms of like a water park. So have you, have you seen any of those combinations out there? I mean, I definitely would be a bigger, bigger uh draw uh or bigger, obviously, acreage to do something, but have you come across any of those multi-discipline parks? Other than Magic Mountain or something like that, but you know, something, something like that could be more manageable for a city?
Yes, uh, so I'm currently involved in working on a project that is a, just exactly as you described. It's a combination of both a water park and an aerial adventure park. Uh, and uh it is a non-belayed aerial adventure park. What that means is most aerial adventure parks, you have to put, you have to dawn a harness, and you have to have safety equipment that that either you're uh operating that is uh you're unable to unclip yourself through the whole thing, or somebody else is operating your equipment for you. Uh, this would be a non-belayed aerial adventure park. So it is mostly netted, and it is uh um both, it is integrated with the water park. So imagine walking through uh a circular net where a waterfall is coming through the middle of that net, right? Um, and, you know, multiple other activities like that.
So kind of my question a little bit is blending the RFP for the master plan, but your presentation. So I don't, I don't have any specific questions to you about your presentation, but you you paused and questioned, do you have anything else to add or 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 share? With the, I just, I, before I jump to the next set of questions with deal with the RFP, I want to make sure your presentation or comments.
Oh, yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of different answers, comments to his presentation, but if you were to go into the RFP, we can do that.
So, no, I think just in in kind of a summary blend is also what we have in front of us for our request for proposals is the master plan. And Mark, this kind of goes with you said in phases. The master plan will include a project description and site plan identifying appropriate uses of the park. So the this, the master plan that we're doing uh is gonna come back, and it's gonna let us know any of the environmental. It's gonna let us know setbacks, spaces, utility, actions. So then, so with that is um to what was presented here, the master plan will come back and give you kind of a scope to scale. You can utilize X amount of acres, or you can't do this over here, you can't do that. So blending two is once we do this phase or do this process, it'll give us some some boundaries and some outlays then to look towards ideas kind of then with an adventure.
Yeah, so so the big adventure park stuff he's showing you on some of these like like Rockland Court Park Adventures, we're not talking about doing that at Out Bayou. If we do any adventure elements at Buck, Up Bayou, it'll be probably much smaller, like some zip lines, maybe some aerial courses, rope courses, things like that, if if anything at all. The the bigger move would be to do an adventure park with the entertainment district as part of the indoor sports facility. Yeah. So after we're done with Dylan's presentation, Chris is gonna walk you through the RFP.
Got it. Okay, I don't have, think, I don't have any further questions for Dylan's presentation if anybody else does. Okay.
Just a few more comments before we let Dylan go. Um, you know, a few things, uh, when we first brought this project to Rockland, a lot of people were like, are you crazy? There's a huge amount of risk, and people are gonna get hurt and and all those things. And there's always obviously a chance for people getting hurt. People walk on the sidewalk and get hurt. It it happens. But you would be surprised, this is an extraordinarily heavily regulated industry. When you build an adventure park, it's an amusement park, and so OSHA is all over it all the time. Uh, and the standards are extremely high, and so the firms that have to design this and build it can only have to have certain licensure requirements, and uh they have to walk through all this with OSHA. That's one of the reasons why it's extremely important. You hire an expert who knows how to deal with all of those things, because they make sure, as as Dylan mentioned, the belay system, if you're gonna, you're gonna be hooked in, you you know, if you fall off of a ride, you fall two feet, you know, like you're hooked onto a cable, so it catches you, and you pull yourself back up, and you continue on the way. So, you know, there are obviously are opportunities for bumps and bruises. Um, and there can be, I suppose, catastrophic failures, but you know, Rockland hasn't had any of those. They've had bumps and bruises. Another facilities have had bump and bruises, you know, some, there's requirements, you can't be under a certain age to ride, you can't be over a certain weight to ride. There's things like that that you have to meet those standards. Um, we have, you'll see that public safety will love to use the course. The firefighters, police will love it, because you have all these very interesting confined spaces for training. Sometimes you have to save people, because you're, you're, you know, you're sort of um, what's the word I'm looking for when you go off the side of a cliff, Dylan, and you're rappelling?
Uh, rappelling, yeah.
Yeah, right? So they will find situations where they have to repel off sides of buildings, and so public safety uses these facilities. Um, one of the nice things about it is you'll have, as Dylan mentioned before, you know, he partners with uh the concert series up in Rockland, right? So somebody can come for the weekend, get a discounted ticket to the adventure park, get a discounted ticket to the concert series, and spend the, you know, spend the whole day there. Um, and the other thing that he mentioned, he touched on briefly, is, you know, it definitely helps you become more of a destination. Like Rockland, it's always been a great community, and and people love living there. But it wasn't until we bent the, built the adventure park that Rockland made the top one hundred places to live in the country. Because when you start adding certain unique uh quality of life additions into your community, when those, and I'm not saying that's everything, but that's just another little by that sideline that these agencies who rate your community and look at you, and people are always looking at us, right? Uh, they all of a sudden start seeing a unique quality, a unique attribute in your community that someone else doesn't have that makes you a special place to be. And people, I'm not saying somebody's gonna necessarily move to your facility, but people are gonna want to visit and spend money, and then you never know, right? People are like, oh, I would love to live there, because they have this beautiful concert park now in Zumwalt. They have this amazing outdoor, and they have this a great uh nature preserve, right? You add, you stack these things up. Remember when I first came here, I told you the top ten things to do in Tulare, seven of them were in Visalia. Right? Well, we're starting to add to that list now of things that make Tulare great. So I just want you to keep that in mind. I have no other questions unless counsel does, and we're gonna let Dylan go here so we can get into the RFP, unless you, Dylan, have any other comments?
I don't. Thank you very much for having me, everyone.
All right, Chris, if you wouldn't mind leading us through a quick review of the RFP, let's just hit the highlights for counsel.
Good evening, counsel. Yeah, um, twenty twenty-three master plan basically said that Elk Bayou is definitely underutilized. Uh, you have fifty-four acres of open space out there that um can definitely accommodate more uses. Um, came to you earlier in the year looking to uh update the restroom buildings, update the playgrounds, um, the potable water system isn't functional. So we have all these elements out there. The picnic pavilions are questionable. So basically, the goal of this project is to have a landscape architect come in and really look at the park and determine what the uses would be, what elements of the master plan make sense to incorporate out there. Um, as uh what type of more recreation, I did add in here maybe a uh, and I'm not talking a launch ramp, I'm just talking a place where you could put a kayak in at La Spina, and then go all the way down to the other bridge with a nice exit point. Um, possibly some picnic pavilions, get a little bit of revenue out there, but nothing major, updoing the uh the restrooms, possibly a playground, maybe not a playground, but it's really having the architect come in and kind of say, okay. And with that, be able to give us uh a rough estimate of what it would cost per the conceptual plan. And as you'll see, there is uh, last paragraph is to work with the landscape architect to consider different elements of an adventure park.
And then counsel, you look at the back of your packet. We've got a series of different maps in there that show sort of the property ownership. We mentioned last time the city pretty much owns all the property on both sides of the bayou. Uh, we obviously have the the airport adjacent to it in the runway zone, so that's an issue that we have to work through with FAA. Uh, we believe they're gonna allow people in that area. We just can't allow tall structures in that area. Um, it's so, you know, we're just gonna work with, we would issue this, we would get proposals from mostly landscape architecture firms. We also have some floodplain maps and some photographs. But we would anticipate mostly, you know, landscape architecture firms, firms that specialize in park development. They'd probably bring on a consulting firm, kind of like uh Dylan's firm perhaps, or others to, you know, give comments on the adventure element piece of it. Um, so we'll get those proposals in. We'll have a committee that will review them. We'll pick a firm, you know, we'll negotiate a contract. We'd bring that contract back to you for approval. Then we'd work with them for, I don't, you know, I don't know, six months. Who knows how long it'll take them, you know, we have to figure that out. But to start developing the conceptual plan and cost estimates that would come back to you, come to the park commission, and then decide, you know, what kind of park you want to have out there and what it's gonna cost and how we implement it. Remember, a big driver of this one in particular is, as we continue to do, we got a lot of single-family subdivisions coming in, and a lot of those subdivisions are paying park fees. And as we collect those park fees, especially as they go through the skip program, we have to have projects that we can spend that money on within three years. And so this will be a good project, you know, depending how big you decide you want to make it. But if we're just talking trails and foot bridges and no adventure elements and a passive park, those are low, low dollars. If you decided to have all that, but instead make the park active, where we have a lot of paid playground structures and things, you probably add five hundred thousand to the bill. And then if you had adventure elements, in Rockland, for example, we built nine elements, but there was ten that we designed. We decided to hold one back. And because you want to add elements over time, so new features, that one element was called a king swing, so it's just a big swing. It threw you out over the eighty-foot-deep quarry and then brought you back. Uh, average cost for an element like that, so it kind of looks like a, like something you might see at the fair. Uh, about five hundred thousand dollars for an element like that. But most, most of the elements are small, like we had a rope bridge. That was another element we designed, a rope bridge, that I think was like two hundred thousand dollars. So anyways, we're looking, you know, we're ready to issue the RFP. Um, this, I don't, you're welcome to look at it and let us know if you have questions or concerns, or things you want to add to it. It's pretty standard, pretty standard operation. We issue just stuff like all the time.
There is some specific language in there um that there's three potential grants we're looking at in uh helping to fund development of the master plan. So there's language in there regarding the community meetings that specifically meets the grant criteria, which gives us a leg up on pursuing the grant.
My uh, just I I I guess what you're asking us to do is to go ahead with this request for proposal.
Yeah, I mean, we're not asking you to do anything. We, I think we have the authority to support, but if you have some, yeah.
I'm always a little hesitant to greenlight something that uh, how many pages is this?
Well, I'm not actually asking, I'm not really asking for your permit. If you want to say, don't issue until we have your permission, we can do it, but we could have issued this tomorrow without your permission. We're ready to issue this.
Yeah, that's not a good way to start.
Well, what I'm saying, we do that every day. Like, we admin, we administratively have the authority to issue RFPs, which we do every day. We apply for grants. Every day, we don't seek counsel's permission. I'm giving it to you so that you have the opportunity to think about it and give some input. If you want, if you're telling me, I really need more time to read this, and I want to give you input, then we'll delay issuing the RFP.
And I fully appreciate that. I guess what I'm trying to say is if we go forward and we find that there's something in here that we should have caught or at least brought up, then we're on a position to where it said, why didn't you catch that? Well, we didn't catch it because we didn't have the opportunity to go through it. So if you, if you'd have just done it,
Yeah.
it hadn't come to count. But now you put, I mean, it, I got here tonight, and it's sitting there. I have no idea what's in that document.
We can do whatever you want. I I'm just saying to you, we do issue, we do issue RFPs every day. Don't seek counsel. It's not a requirement for us to seek permission. It is, it, I'm doing it as a courtesy. If you have an interest, we can wait. If you'd like us to, if we'd like, you you know, the most of this language is standard language we pull from all of our RFPs. So if you would like us to wait until you have a chance to review this, we can do that. If you'd like to start reviewing all of our RFPs, we could do that. I I was doing it as a courtesy, as you are aware, we were starting to move forward with initiative you had indicated previously you'd like us to do.
No, I, I'm not saying all of the RFPs should come before us. I I'm saying the ones that you bring to us at a council meeting and you set before us, those I'd like to see ahead of time.
Absolutely. We can wait.
I I, it's up to counsel. I mean, well, I, if I'm absorbing your point, right, I understand is to summarize it, we we got a document tonight, and we're being asked input on it, but we just got it. But what I unders, but I understand overall kind of past practice and what we have is this is, this is a standard boilplate of a request for proposals. And it's a request for proposals for a master plan like other ones that we've done. So as you issue the RFP, and and we could wait for review, but the meat and potatoes really kind of comes back in the proposals, because
Yes.
at that point then of
Yes.
and and I think, I don't want to lead the wrong way, but if maybe extending Councilman Maderos' point, and I can understand at the proposals, a person were to say, well, why'd you do, if counsel were to say, why'd you do this, or why'd you do that? And the submitting agent goes, well, that's what the RFP said to do. And it's like, well, that didn't match our goals or components with it. But I'm all all together, I think, with that, since this is just a request for proposal, we'll get to review as that material comes in, and we can make changes. I'm, I'm okay with it, but I I I just wanted to say, even though I'm okay, if I'm absorbing your point, right? Yeah, and by and large, my concerns can be dealt with in a week. I mean, you can go ahead, and if there's something in here.
Yeah, but you should add them. We do it all the time.
Then then uh I'll get back in touch with you, or any, any of the rest of us can. And if you feel at that time it needs to come back for clarification, we can do it at that point.
Yeah, standard, like, for example, when we issued the downtown master plan, when we issued the water, when we issued the water sewer master plan, when we issued the parks master plan, none of those came to council. And those were probably eighty-page documents. But what happens normally in the process is we issue the RFP, there's a period of time where they can submit questions, and almost every single time, they will, they'll, they ask questions like, well, I noticed on page four, it says six submittals, but on page four, it said, or six, it says eight submittals. Can you clarify? Or somebody will say, when when you're looking for this, do you want, do you want to perform it? They'll ask questions like that. So that gives us a chance to issue an addendum. We can handle counsel the same way. If you have a chance to review it, and you want to get comments back in a week or two, uh, or we can tell you the deadline by which they have to give us questions. If you want to submit questions by then, we'd be happy to answer them and address, and issue an addendum. It's that simple.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, uh, I had a couple of questions on, in terms of the cost, where where's that gonna come from? Where what line item, the budget to pay for this, will it?
We haven't decided that. That'll be a council decision in the future.
Okay.
You might decide in the future not even do the project.
So so as the mayor mentioned, when RFP is issued, and we have a bidder that's recommended, and then obviously they have a price tag, then that's when we'll decide where it comes from?
Yeah, well, yes and no. So so you already put money into budget for the master plan? It depends if the master plan comes in at that cost or not.
Well, yeah, that's my point, because the the fifty thousand dollars that I helped and got support from the council to set aside for master plan, planning, I guess, for the master plan, you know, part of it was to take a look at a building, a softball complex, right? Obviously, I asked the council to consider looking into that. The council rejected it at this point uh to to look at building a softball complex on the west side, or at least the facility, of the uh feasibility of it. So is that the the budget you're looking at? I know it's fifty thousand for that.
That's not it.
So there's a separate?
Yes, and that regional sportsplex project's gonna come back to you on December second.
Well, no, but I'm talking about the the fifty thousand we had allocated for the planning, so that's not the source of this.
Not not associated with a regional sportsplex, no. That's project's coming back on December second.
Okay, and uh I think on the scope of services, I don't know what page it is, but it's number two, scope of services. Um, one of the things you guys are asking for is for them to have two meetings at the park. I'm not sure how that really would be really successful. I think I would rather you guys have maybe one meeting at the park and see who shows up at the park, but maybe a meeting here at the council chambers or somewhere else that
Sure.
I I just don't see people coming to.
Absolutely, easy change to make. It's done.
That's, that's specific to a grant. In order to get that grant funding, they say we have to have two on weekends, two on site, and then two any other time. That's why I added it in there. Because then the consultant or the landscape architect can handle that portion of it for us, and we could go after the grant, sir. Well, then, i- if I would add one more.
For here.
Yeah, because I, that's just the minimum. I I just don't think people will call it.
Yeah, and and answer your first question, remember, e- everything we do um is sort of a work in progress, right? Like, so there's nothing that we presented to you in the last four years where it's a perfect project with a bow on it, where we bring it to you day one, and it's like, we have all the answers, all the questions answered, all the funding's in place for everything, and this is how it's gonna look when it's done. It's like, no, everything's a work in progress. So to answer your original question about funding, remember what I So to answer your original question about funding, remember what I said at the beginning of the meeting? The primary source of funding this is gonna probably be, if you guys decide to ultimately move forward with the project, will be the park, the park fees that are paid, right? Cause we have to have a place to put those fees, they have to be, we can't hold them, we gotta spend them within three years. So that's the primary funding mechanism. But he just mentioned to you that we're actually going after a really big grant, if we get that big grant, that might completely underwrite the total cost of the project. But we won't know if you get the grant for, you know, six months, so like, we're always doing that, right? We found you twenty-six million dollars in the last four years that we didn't have, because we're always searching for money. So I can't answer with great specificity how it's all gonna work, if you just allow us to do it, I can tell you good things will happen.
So I think in, again, more, I was just saying fairness.
That was just, I was just concerned about getting people to show up.
So if, if like you said, if you could issue this tomorrow, I think as one council member of reviewing materials, and I think respecting that if any council were to say, would it be fair or council or city manager, perhaps by, by Sunday, perhaps by the twenty-second, go in through the week to allow for any questions, comments, which allows you to issue it on Monday, the twenty-second or so, is that fair?
Uh, no, I would rather issue it tomorrow, and then we can, then you can give us comments in the same period that the consultants can give us comments, and then we can adjust with an addendum.
I'm, I'm in favor of sending out tomorrow's.
Okay, so, all right, we're on the same page.
Yep. And we'll add a meeting, I encourage tomorrow.
Okay.
That's all from us.
All right, so any other items marked staff or council members for our study session? Okay, with that, I will adjourn the Tulare City Council Study Session on the Elk Bayou Master Plan. And with that is we will take a five minute break, and we will convene our regular city council meeting at seven ten PM.
Excuse me.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, residents of Tulare, staff and fellow council members. We will call to order our seven PM regular meeting at seven fifteen PM this Tuesday, September sixteenth. Uh, moving forward on our agenda is we have pledge of allegiance and invocation. And our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by our Vice Mayor Steve Harrell. And our, and after our pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for our invocation led by Ty Davis, pastor of Tulare Community Church.
Luke. I pledge allegiance to the flag, including the United States of America. And to the people of the country which stand. One nation, in the name of God, indivisible, and ever changing.
Would you pray with me? Father in heaven, we gather tonight in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. We thank you for sending him to die on the cross for our sins, to rise again, so that through faith in him, we can have forgiveness and new life. Lord, apart from you, we have no hope, but with you, we have everything we need. And tonight I lift up our city to you, I ask for your hand of protection and blessing over this council, over our entire city staff, over our first responders, police, fire and EMTs, over doctors, nurses and medical workers here in Tulare, and over every teacher and educator that is shaping the next generation, for that you would give them strength, wisdom and courage to do what is right. And Lord, I pray for our city's finances as well, everything that we have is because of you and ultimately belongs to you. And I pray for your continued favor, and ask that you provide what is needed, that you help us to be wise and responsible with every dollar, help us to be good stewards and to bless us with your wisdom in our decision making tonight. And Lord, I also pray for our nation, I pray that you would bring us back together as one people under you. That's how this country was built, that's where our unity and blessings will come from again. And pray, Lord, that you would heal our divisions and turn our hearts back to you. May everything said and done in this chamber room tonight honor you. And Tulare shine as a city that belongs to you, we pray this in the mighty name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ty. Next on our agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar. Or to request an item from the consent calendar be pulled for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearing and general business items will be heard at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes, with each speaker allowed three minutes. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine, and the clerk will assist you with your call. So I don't have any yellow cards submitted, so I'll go to chambers, are any members of the public that wish to do public comment? Good evening, welcome.
My name's Lacey Perryman, and I'm actually gonna be reading on behalf of, uh, my neighbor Rod, who couldn't be here tonight. Members of the city council, I again thank you for your time, and I apologize for not being here in person, but I have good neighbors willing to speak on my behalf. Last Wednesday, September tenth, at nine PM, I heard yelling outside and stepped out into my yard to see two police cars in front of the group home. Two of the troubled teens immediately saw me and began yelling at me, ordering me back inside in their typical street thug language, they were attempting to intimidate me, and one of them began coming toward me as though she wanted to fight. The police intervened, but the point is, these teens are becoming more aggressive and emboldened because they face no consequences for their behavior. I believe it's only a matter of time before one of them assaults a resident in my neighborhood. I obtained police call history for two group homes in Bakersfield that are owned by the same person that owns the one in our neighborhood. From January first to the present, one of the homes has had a hundred and eighty-two police calls for service, and the other a hundred and five. The calls are the same as what occurs in our neighborhood, missing and out of control juveniles, disruptive behavior and violent assaults, including assaults on staff. This is a clear indication of what we have to look forward to in our neighborhood. There is a pattern with Scott's Social Services. It is blatantly obvious that the owner of this company cares nothing about correcting these troubled teens and helping them to become productive members of society. Instead, he gets wealthy by collecting money from a state, which historically throws away tax dollars at problems and doesn't verify results. The reality is, these teens are only getting worse, and my neighbors and I suffer for it. I hope you will stand with my neighbors and I, not only to defend our neighborhood, but these teens as well. By not enforcing rules and providing consequences, they are not helping these kids and teaching them anything, but how to manipulate and take advantage of a failing system. I am certain if you follow young women who have been through this program, you'll find the majority of them leave with the same problems they came in with. And the only change that is certain is the increased balance in someone's bank account. Thank you.
May we address that, Mr. Mayor? I think public comment or any point of order, or if our city staff has anything of inclination to that, I just want to be cautious of going into a debate.
Staff can certainly address it, um, I would just suggest perhaps if we allow the citizens to speak a little bit more, we make sure, writing down the issues, and then we can address all of them perhaps at the end.
You were here representing, and if you're here as a group, as it said, neighbors, so is there anything additional or any other speakers on this topic?
Okay, we moved into this neighborhood when our son was ten months old, and we knew he was gonna have developmental delays because of his traumatic birth.
If I, I don't mean to cut you off, just if I can, cause I think as council members, my questions, can you specify the neighborhood or an, or an address?
Del Loco.
And, and your name, please?
Elise. Um, so we moved into this neighborhood, um, we didn't know the extent of his disabilities at the time, when we moved, he was only ten months old. Um, but we, we'd moved into that home because the neighborhood was safe and quiet, and we saw children playing, and we knew it would be a good place to raise our son. Um, fast forward five years to today, we welcomed two more children, and our oldest son was diagnosed with cerebral palsy, autism, and recently, a rare and severe form of epilepsy. We do everything we can to make sure our home is his safe haven, life is already hard enough for him outside of the home. So we need him to be able to relax and be himself when he is home. One thing that increases his seizures significantly is lack of sleep. We do all we can to make sure he gets enough sleep each night and rest throughout the day. But since the group home moved in right next door, we've noticed a dramatic increase in seizures. He's so tired throughout the day and his seizures have gone so bad to the point of brain surgery soon up at Stanford. Um, because his epilepsy type is so rare, we don't know the extent of brain damage that each seizure causes him. Suit up, sudden unexpected death of epilepsy has always been a fear of mine, but it's become even more realistic since this home moved in. Each night we go to bed not knowing what's going to happen, but he's been kept awake by girls screaming outside, fighting, breaking glass bottles, ambulances, cops coming and girls screaming profanities at these cops and laughing in their faces as they walk away because there's nothing that they can really do about it. Let us not forget there was a literal stabbing in the house just a couple of weeks ago and a girl was arrested in our front yard. We've had alcohol bottles thrown over our fence into our backyard, the stench of pot wafting over the fence at every hour of the day, burning who knows what in front of our house and most recently in front of their house, broken glass from liquor bottles in the streets where our children ride their bikes. My son doesn't understand safety. He doesn't have stranger danger. That wasn't an issue in this neighborhood for so long. Everyone knows him and looks out for him, but now we don't feel safe in our home. Once before his autism diagnosis, he got out of the house and his sister, who was just learning to walk at the time, just a baby, followed him. Thankfully, our neighbors across the street were outside and quickly got them and yelled for us. This all happened in maybe a span of two minutes, but it was terrifying. And the thought of that happening right now with the house next door sickens me. I'm begging you all today to please help us, help our family, our son, the kids in this neighborhood, our neighbors. We need your help. My son's quality of life depends on it. Thank you for your time.
Anything you'd like to add or?
Yeah, a couple of things. I, some of you.
May I?
Yeah.
Um, your father's not in Line Dicker. Yeah, and I've had lunch and discussed this with Mr. Line Dicker. I also had a discussion with Mr. Clausen about the situation. And and to the extent that things need to be done, unfortunately, they're done slowly, but they are being done. And I I would turn to the city attorney and also our city manager to tell you what we are doing.
Yep. So a couple of things, uh, for those of you that may not have been here at the last council meeting when we were, this issue was addressed. Um, I just wanna make sure, we always say this point because not everybody knows this. So these types of facilities are not permitted by the city, right? So they're, they, under state law, they're allowed to exist anywhere. There could be fifteen of these homes in Del Lago. They could be homes in any neighborhood anywhere. There's nothing the city can do in terms of, we don't permit it, we can't really prohibit it, okay? The the best we can do unfortunately, and it's not because of a lack of resources or a lack of caring, it's because the state um, has taken a position that um, these homes have to exist somewhere and nobody wants them in their neighborhood and so the state, these are my opinions. Um, so the state has passed law that says, well, we're gonna make sure that they can exist anywhere, okay? So the the restrictions on us in terms of prohibiting them are very difficult. Um, what we have been doing, and I wanna just take a second if we can, I'd like the police chief to just share a few comments about the conversations you've had with the state. And then I'd like to turn it over to our city attorney to talk about what we have done to date and what we're tracking and what we're doing to try to address the issue beyond beyond just the conversations. And I have a question after that for the city attorney.
Hi, and I apologize for your situation, but we uh, we painstakingly reached out to the state regarding some regulations and some letters we've written to them. We've P R A'd them and they have a responsibility to make notice after every police interaction that the group home is supposed to respond, report. Uh, they're significantly behind on that. So we're still waiting on some reports. There's some other actions we've taken and I think the city attorney or even assistant city manager can probably speak better to that, but um, it's not being ignored. We're there honestly every day mostly. Uh, and I don't wanna get to the standard of Bakersfield, so we're working on that.
Either the two of you?
I can start. Uh, yeah, after the last council meeting, um, I worked with the chief and staff um, to um, find out where the property owner was, get a list of all the violations cuz there were a ton. Um, and it's not a quick process, but we started the process, um, reaching out to the owner and telling them, hey, you really have a big problem here. Uh, and if you don't do something about it, we're gonna do something about it. Um, they have a deadline for that. Again, it's not a quick process, but um, we anticipate either hearing from him by the end of the month or we're gonna move forward with something. Um, Thomas, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add to that. So um, yeah, they, the owner in question is the property owner. So who is different than the business that's running that. And so that's very important for us because that does give the city additional leverage because ultimately the property owner is responsible for the conduct of their tenants and so on. So they have until the end of the month to respond to this and whether they do or don't, then we can choose next steps and proceedings to get them to do something about the tenant that they've chose to bring to the community.
One other thing from a research standpoint, the owner of the property indicates in the deed when he acquired title where to send the property tax statement. The property tax statement goes to an address in Cerritos that he doesn't live at. It's an, it's an LLC with a strange name. I gave it to you, Mario. And that L L C that owns that property where the address was sent, its address for property tax statement is another property in Cerritos. So what we're uh, assuming is it's property owner, I mean, that, there's, they're stacking this to make it difficult to find out exactly who the individual is that's actually running this thing. And that, that's part of the problem. I think you'd agree, gentlemen, under the circumstances, but we're moving forward.
Uh, the question that I would have for the city attorney is, we have met, we have talked with the state on multiple occasions. We've shared with them all the police reports. So they understand the nature of the incidences from a law enforcement perspective. My question to you or to any of the other two staff members is, do we think if we were to share with them letters from the citizens, like the compelling, I hate the word you use compelling, um, difficult, challenging situation you're being faced, you're facing with, with your child? If we help, if we shared those letters with the state, do we think that would help us at all getting more of their attention and concern on this issue that it's truly impacting the health and safety of of the neighbors? Or or is that not a concern of theirs?
Um, I I I would say obviously it's beneficial um, for a number of reasons. One, whether it is that we can send them to the state, but also that has to do with the civil action that we would then take in declaring the property a nuisance. Any sort of written substantiation we have from folks in the neighborhood will be very compelling in front of a judge.
Yeah, there, there's petitions written uh, in other neighborhoods regarding uh, homes or halfway houses for sex offenders and things like that. So I don't think it would hurt at all one bit.
So I wanna encourage each of you and to talk to your neighbors uh, to an orderly, into an orderly fashion, submit letters to the city clerk's office. Melissa, if you'd raise your hand for everyone. She'll collect those letters, you know, over the next several weeks from you so that we have them and we could definitely make them an exhibit. If we end up going in front of the judge, we'll make them a part of the exhibit for the courts to consider.
And if it's easier, if it's easier, uh, Mr. Clausen spoke last time. Uh, he has my number. He called me. Um, I was out of state and had a long conversation with him. I, if he wants to take the lead in putting it together, I, I will meet with him and deliver, and deliver it where it needs to go. Okay?
Yeah, anything by the end of the month would be appreciated.
Yeah, I, I mentioned, um, I think at the last meeting that we will need um, your support. Um, if we go through with some kind of court action. There's a separate kind of issue, which is the, the issue with the state, which is more of a permitting issue. Um, but both of those things are very helpful. Um, and if we get to the point where we need to do something in court, we, we likely will reach out to some of you.
And as a side note, child protective services is well aware also and they're doing investigation.
Uh, Vice Mayor just asked me a question which I didn't hear touched on and said, so also as well is the discussion because we're saying state that are, are local legislative. So we have Assembly Member Macedo, we have State Senator Hurtado, and I think as well as those letters and information being passed on to them um, as well. Any, any other comments with that? Is there anyone else who would like to speak from the Del Lago community on the Del Lago nuisance issue? Is there any, anybody else in the chamber with public comments? We've talked, do we have anybody on the phone? You do?
Donette? Yes. Go ahead. Do I go ahead? Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ishwood and members of council. This is Donette Silver Carter with the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to share information on activities that we have coming up. First and foremost, we have our business after hours this Thursday evening. We will be at Ed Dina's Auto Center here in Tulare. And we welcome everyone to come for some networking activities and an opportunity to grow and sustain business in our community. We also wanna refer everyone to our Chamber of Commerce Facebook page, our Instagram and our website. We have a lot of activities coming up in the next thirty to forty-five days with regard to ribbon cutting ceremonies and three groundbreakings that'll be happening. Please go ahead and follow us on those pages so that you can be informed immediately when those activities are being planned here in the community. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to council. And that was a great presentation earlier on the option for an adventure park here in our community. We definitely love what we see happening in Tulare and how that positions us for our local economy as well as community support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Donette. I think the call ended there um, at the end. So yes, appreciate the public comments from the Del Lago community. Appreciate Donette uh, giving an update on the chambers. Anybody else have public comments? All right, we'll move forward on our agenda to item seven, communications.
No communication.
Item eight, council reports and items of interest, and I'll start with our vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On September the sixth, attended Rosa Brothers thirteen years in business on South K Street. Uh, that night also attended Barks and Bourbon for the Friends and Troy Animal Services. The ninth, attended the Downtown Association. The tenth, took part in the opening of the Tulare County Fair. And on the eleventh, attended the nine eleven ceremony that was put on by our fire department with a outstanding job just like always.
All right, Councilman Ciallo? Councilmember Sarah?
So I was able to attend the grand opening for H and R Labor, which is a new uh, business opening in our community. Also, the fair opening and the quilts of honor. Uh, worked on the fair parade itself, which was a new, new activity. It was fun. The nine eleven blood drive attended the uh, ceremony as well as my Kiwanis Club did pancakes and we were able to um, support that event that Rotary puts on.
Councilmember Maderas?
I went to the Rosa Brothers thirteenth anniversary, but I was actually there to buy milk and didn't realize it was going on until Councilmember Harold told me. Uh, I also went to the opening of the fair and the quilt ceremony and I wanna congratulate the vice mayor for being recognized as a veteran in our community and he, he was given a quilt. Um, also, I was at the nine eleven ceremony uh, put on by Rotary with the help of Kiwanis. Did I miss out on anything else? And last night, the leadership Tulare reception at the Tulare Historical Museum.
Did you uh, get your milk at Rosa Brothers?
Oh, hell yes, and some ice cream too.
Best, the best.
How do you top that? I think that's the point. Yeah. You were the one that got the fifty gallon tub. I was, if you have a say, I learned something. When you get soft serve ice cream in a cone and then you decide you gotta get going, so you go ahead and you get in your car that's been sitting in the heat at a hundred and fifteen degrees when you get on it and you turn on the air conditioning, doesn't make any difference. It just melts all over you and that's what I went through. I don't get the cone. I get the five gallon bucket and that big one. That's, it's nice. Uh, yes, uh, for, for everybody involved in our fire department and everyone, uh, memorial, everybody involved with our nine eleven memorial, great job. It's very reverent and and wonderful recognition towards the memorial uh, that takes place that day. And also on that day is, is um, if you see on CBS forty-seven was invited by Dad Maderos to do the meeting with the mayors and had the live presentation on noon that day. Is that what it is? Bad Maderos? Yeah, just like I said, Maderos bad. Yeah. Uh, but I really appreciated that opportunity from CBS forty-seven to talk about our community. So it was quick. I'm sure Mark and Jennifer noticed that I got a couple of comments in there wrong on some specifics, but um, a good, I just appreciate the opportunity to talk about Tulare. So uh, thank with that and it was great to see um, it was great to see it really shared a lot on social media too um, out there. So always good to talk about Tulare. Okay, moving forward on our agenda, number nine, consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Look to council if there's any items you want to remove or what your desire for action is.
I'll make a mo, I, I seen none pulled.
Well, I, I'd like to have nine point ten pulled.
I'll make a motion to uh, adopt items nine point one through nine point eleven, except nine point one zero. Okay?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second for approval of the consent calendar uh, with removal of nine point ten.
Well, Mr. Mayor, council, um, thank you for.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Sagala, nine point.
Yes, uh, this is.
How much was the, excuse me, how much was the amount for this on the settlement?
Nine hundred?
Nine hundred dollars. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, well, I wanted to take this opportunity to ask uh, about the, this particular project and Mr. Miller, perhaps uh, give me some insight on maybe this being one of the last obstacles before we move forward on this uh, close to nine year project, eight year project.
Like twelve.
And so at least I've been on it, since I've been on the council eight years or nine years, uh, see what's, what's the next step on this? And and just for the public, this particular item is a settlement on some um, uh, to prove a settlement on a, a item we had before the courts. Um, the city attorney wanted to.
It's for, it's for an easement.
Yeah, for an easement, yes. So thank you. So Mr. Miller?
Yes, this is the last bit of property that we need before Edison can start the relocation of the utilities, which then frees us up to put the project out to bid for construction. So um, typically we would give Edison two, three months to complete their work or at least get well into it before actually putting the project out to bid.
So just the outstanding, excuse me, the outstanding piece right now is that Edison is going to underground about two or three or move two or three utility poles, correct?
Correct. It's, this all comes down to one pole in particular that needs to be relocated. This, this easement is the last one and it's for one single pole that needed to be relocated.
Okay, well, uh, we'll cross our fingers to see if that uh, continues.
Can I ask a question, Mike?
Yes.
Do you think a year from now there'll be a light there working?
I hope so.
Yes. Going down my limb, I'm saying yes. I won't be here in a year or so.
Oh, man.
I think we're gonna have to have a big party at on that, that intersection.
It's an interesting uh, answer, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, well, if there are no other surprises or questions or comments, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt the nine point one oh.
Second.
Say we have a motion and second for nine point one oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Moving forward on our agenda is item ten, public hearing. Comments related to public hearing items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item unless otherwise extended by council. Again, for those that wish to. Again, for those that wish to provide kind of public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Ten point one, proposed twenty twenty-four consolidated annual performance evaluation report, often referred to as a CAEPER. And I have a question to Mario, which I forget and didn't catch in this item, is with this action, this is, as I understand, a summary of the CAEPER, which is the performance evaluation. It's not allocating, as I understand, or direction due, I work for self-help enterprises, which is mentioned in the CAEPER, is that a conflict?
I, I don't see one on this instance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move forward, ten point ones, a staff presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Norveen Brar, and I serve as housing and grants specialist in the Community Development Department. It is my pleasure to offer you a presentation on the CAEPER. City staff request that council receive this presentation as part of public hearing to receive comments and consider the adoption of a resolution approving the twenty twenty-four consolidated annual performance evaluation report referred to as CAEPER. City staff prepared the CAEPER to ensure that the city's compliance with the Housing and Urban Development Department HUD and to assess alignment with our annual action plan objectives. Programs and activities proposed for CDBG funding must be located within city limits, include only eligible uses of funds, and meet at least one of the CDBG national objectives, such as benefiting low to moderate income households. In our city's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four consolidated plan, city staff presented guidelines for our CDBG programs, which align with national objectives. Our goals were to improve infrastructure for low moderate income households, directly assist and aid in housing navigation for the population at risk for homelessness, provide or improve access to employment and training opportunities, improve access to housing, affordable housing, provide services to low, moderate and income households, and for persons with special needs. In addition, city goals were for professional grant administration and fair housing services. A copy of the full con plan document and related attachments remain posted on the city's website, available upon request throughout the previous five fiscal years. The city's program year activities ended on or before June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. City staff compiled the information from final months and quarter and to process those final reimbursement payments to the sub recipients and contractors. The CAEPER report was noticed, posted on the city's website, and distributed through partner organizations since the start of the public comment period on August twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. The comment period ends with this presentation and hearing. The twenty twenty-four CAEPER reviews the previously set goals and identifies outcomes from CDBG activities between July first, twenty twenty-four and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The results of our program activities is quantified by total spending and the amount of households or individuals assisted. The CAEPER includes demographic characteristics of people served under the homelessness and housing rehab activities. The city's twenty twenty-four CAEPER outcomes are split between this slide and the next. On this slide, we have our public service activities with site, well, salt and light, and our minor home rehab activities with self-help enterprises. This table is, here shows our main programmatic outcomes. Each activity is measured, as we stated, by budget, total expenses, how many households or individuals we expected to assist, and the actual service level we achieved in program year twenty twenty-four. Some key projects were completed during program year twenty twenty-four, such as our infrastructure improvement activities. Apricot and Academy Street and Utility System improvements was completed as well as the K nine Bain Dog Park that had its ribbon cutting at the end of the program year. CDBG activities were within budget and helped key populations in the city of Tulare. Both Apricot and Academy and Bain Park Public Infrastructure Projects occurred in low moderate income areas. This concludes my formal presentation. City staff, welcome, welcome any questions and our comments from council and other stakeholders in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. With that is, I will open the public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-four consolidated annual performance evaluation report. Do we have anyone in chambers that wishes to speak to this evaluation report? Clerk, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, with no public, no one further to speak, I will close the public hearing and then look to any questions or comments from council.
Mr. Mayor, council for a comment, a question for Norveen. If you could go back to that slide where you had self-help and the other agency sound light. In terms of, in terms of like the minor home repair program, so from what I'm to read, only six out of the potential ten homes, there were six out of ten homes that were assisted in that program?
Yes.
Is that how I read that?
We had expected to service ten homes. And due to demand in housing rehab, as well as consistent projects that were completed, the increase in related supplies and labor costs have impacted the amount of rehab activity that could be completed within this time.
So, so it wasn't for a lack of homes, it was just that those six cost more and you couldn't service all ten of them? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I was just trying to figure out, I'm sure there's plenty of homes out there that could benefit from the program, but it's more of a budgetary rate rise in cost since you guys budgeted this last time. So in future, in the future efforts, will you guys then reduce the ten to five because of the cost, or you have to have a certain amount of, certain amount that you propose?
In our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine consolidated action plan, or consolidated plan and our annual action plan for twenty twenty-five, we are considering these goals as well as input from councils, welcome. We are reevaluating these goals as well as going over what can be achieved, given these obstacles.
Okay, because I know a cost and construction and stuff just goes up. So I just kind of be more sort of accurate, say, hey, we can find, we can help five homes because that's what we can afford, so. But that's the only question that hits. Thank you.
The other part, I'm not saying it's absolute to this specific performance here, but other times too, is the costs are driven also by code requirements. So if you want to fix a roof, but unfortunately, there's electrical and there's other supports that, you know, that the neck bones connected to the shoulder bone kind of thing is, it sometimes involves a package compared to just a single item, and that can extend costs per project.
Right, I just think five out of five looks better than six out of ten, so. You know, when the public sees this, like, hey, wait a minute, how come you guys aren't fulfilling your goal when there's a lot of stuff behind it, right?
Definitely, and thank you for your question.
If I'm at council, so this is just one funding source, CDBD. So as Norveen correctly mentioned, the goals are driven in our con plan, and they are goals. We try our best to reach them. We know this is a major area of need in our community. It came through when we prepared the new consolidated plan, which will start with this fiscal year that we're in. And we do have other sources of funding we're looking at to extend the reach. Your council may recall, we were awarded under the Moore Program for mobile homes that need repair. We also are, in the process, your council will see a substantial amendment to our first annual action plan and our con plan. We, for, for a good reason, we are going to be a participating jurisdiction under the home program. And so that'll provide additional dollars for owner occupied rehab that we can also leverage to meet the needs of our community.
Thank you, Mario. Any other comments or questions from council?
Thank you.
Okay. Council, do you have action that we would like to take on the consolidated annual performance evaluation?
So, Mr. Mayor, I am moved that we adopt a resolution as presented approving the twenty twenty-four consolidated annual performance evaluation report and authorize the city manager, his, is designated to submit the CAEPER to HUD on behalf of the city of Tulare.
Second.
We have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved five oh. Moving forward, item eleven, general business. Voting delegate selection for annual Cal Cities Conference.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Segala be the voting delegate. And I guess I would be the alternate. Anyone else going, just you and I? Yeah. And I'm deferring to you. And I'm assuming there's no comment. So you got a motion?
And we have a motion? And we do have a second?
Second.
You need your job to say all in favor? All in, yes, I got that, okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And I got.
Voting delegate is approved. Councilman Segala?
I'll make sure I vote on the, on the city's interest for the one or two items that are on the agenda, I guess.
Item twelve, future agenda items? None? Number thirteen, staff updates? All right? Number, I'm kidding, yes, it just seems like things are going like that. Mr. Orr?
Just, we have another movie in the park at Zumo this Friday. If any of you'd like to come out, thank you.
Our contractor, VSS.
What's the movie?
I mean, is it, some, you can bring kids too, is it not?
They're all kid friendly, Mufasa, the live action.
Our contractor, VSS International, completed our chip seal project today. They were in and out in a week and a half. It was a little bit troublesome, but overall, they know what they're doing and they did a good job of getting in and out. So if you would like to be reminded of the list of streets and you would like to drive them, just reach out to me, but we think they turned out really, really good. So we're already talking about our next project, so. I'll send you the list, Dennis. Thank you.
Speaking of a little troublesome, of course, there's construction work going on. Bard's Lee Avenue by Mission Oak High School. That's related to the Mission Creek subdivision, installing a storm drain line. We know it's terrible out there. This, we just, best we can do is try to keep things safe, grin and bear it, try to get through it as fast as possible. So apologies.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Thank you all for coming and supporting our nine eleven ceremony. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for coming to our annual inspection. The Tulare County Fair went off without a hitch. We had zero problems for the five days, and we're ready for the next one.
Nothing a nightmare.
Just surprised to hear Michael Miller announced that he's got like less than a year.
Maybe he meant he wasn't going to be at council meeting.
I don't know what that meant, but we're going to talk about it tomorrow morning.
With that, and then, and the reports, and, and I know Del Lago's in your district, Mr. Maderos, but I did get calls from some neighbors and residents on Champagne Street, and they were just happy about the road being, it's got that surface treatment to it. So it was just a compliment, you know, thanks, hey.
Oh, good, we didn't get any, so it's nice to hear that people were happy.
Yeah, they, they called, it's always good to get the compliments. Also, I think to share too, is the fair real quick. So I came across some people that they live in Fresno, and for the first time ever, they came down to the Tulare County Fair. They'd never been to the Tulare County Fair. Just, they'd heard everything going on in Tulare. They came to the fair and said they felt that it was extremely safe and clean. They saw, you know, Tulare PD's, you know, our finest out there as well, but they really complimented and said they felt our fair was one of the best in the region. And they really didn't feel comfortable going to Fresno Fair at times, and they came down to Tulare and loved Tulare, ate out at Tulare, liked our community. And so passing on that compliment from outside group. So with that, any, there's nothing else?
I have.
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, one thing that I forgot when we were announcing what we had done. Councilmember Maderas, myself, and I don't remember if Councilwoman Ser was there, we attended the police department's inspection on the first day of the fair.
Awesome, and I'm sorry I missed that. I get that, I, I, yeah, I wasn't there. I, I have an educational commitment that took me away during those days, so I had to be at that. All right, with that, we will, item fourteen, recess to closed session to discuss fourteen point one, conference with labor negotiations per government code five four nine five seven point six. Do we have anything else we need to announce with that?
Yeah.
And the public employee evaluation for city manager, government code five four nine five seven. I also, as we go to closed session, our, our regular, we're going into closed session, but we have some students here. If you need anything signed off or proof of life that you were here or something along those lines, we're happy to do that. Jason can sign it.
I'm having to report a full session?
Nothing to report.